Pursuant to Chapter 20, the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may join via Zoom. Information was provided on our agenda. No in-person attendance or members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we're unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website, town.plynton.us, an audio, video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. The information to join via phone was also on there. And this is, I am calling to order, the September 12th meeting of the Plimpton Board of Selectment. So we had the town clerk scheduled as our first appointment, but she is not able to join us. So if, Mark, did you want to jump into traffic speeding enforcement and next steps?
Yeah, sure. Glad to. So it's kind of a long history of some speeding issues, particularly two intersections in town that have been a concern. Main Street and Ring Road and also Winnatuxent and Prospect. Over the last year or two, we've tried a bunch of things. We declared a speed zone in each of those areas, 20 miles an hour. We painted the speed limits all over the roads to kind of alert people, put up signs doing the same. Not much help there. At this year's town meeting, we asked for some money for these flashing speed limit signs, digital signs, and they have gone up. And maybe there's been a little improvement, but we continue to hear from concerned citizens that there were problems, continue to be speeding issues and concerns about safety. So this discussion is intended in part to give citizens a chance to comment to us if they'd like and a chance for us, the Board of Selectmen, to think about next steps. My guess is next steps might largely be around increased police presence. But really, the first step is if there's any citizen comment along the way. If there is, we just ask people to be succinct. We have a fairly full agenda tonight, but we're absolutely glad to hear from citizens. I've heard quite a bit from Howard Randall. I don't see him on the call, but I'll give an opportunity for others to speak and then I probably can summarize his concerns along the way. So are there citizens on the call that want to comment about this issue?
Yes, Mark, I would.
Great.
Hi, Flora Kerkman, I'm Keith Sexton. I live on Center Street here in Plimpton. Particularly this section of Center Street by the Satchak Corn Maze has seen an increase in car crashes, motor vehicle accidents resulting in property damage. We had one the other night that resulted in personal injury. It should be noted that this side of Center Street is not appropriately marked with a speed sign, even though driver's education would tell us that people shouldn't be doing more than 40 miles an hour based on the dispersion of properties. Coming out of Franklin Street in Halifax, it's marked at 30 miles an hour, but for some reason, traffic consistently will pick it up between 50 to 70 miles an hour going along this road, which is a hazard not only for the inhabitants, but anyone moving their wild, their animals, horses, or farm equipment up and down the road.
Good to hear. I think it's the first time we've particularly heard about that area and it's certainly something we can explore.
Well, I know, Mark, that John Trainor, I know, Mark, that the former chief of police considered that the most dangerous intersection in the town, Center Street and 58.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a.
What it's going to segue into here as we move forward tonight is the, not only the traffic, but then we're going to start talking about how it's going to, it's affected once the the commercial corn maze, whatever it is, opens up. You have increased traffic flow. You add the speeding. You add the consumption of alcohol and other quality of life issues that affect the immediate of butters. I think there's some things we should look at for not only zoning, but enforcement in this side of town.
Appreciate your comments. And, and John Trainor, I hear you. I go by 58 and Center all the time and it's a death-defying act a lot of the time and a continued problem, another area that needs some attention. I do see that Howard Randall is now on and I want to make sure he has a chance to speak because he certainly has some opinions about this. Good evening, Howard. I introduced the speed discussion mentioning that we, the actions we've taken so far, the declaring, the speed zones, the signage, the painting, the road and the continued problems and that we're looking to hear from citizens and then the board to pursue next steps on this. So Howard, wanted you had plenty to say about this and we'd love to hear from you.
Yes, Mark. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I'm going to head to the library here because I'm conflicted with the television set right now. Christine, I'm sure you're aware, you and I grew up in a time when we first came to Plimpton where Plimpton had a reputation on the night talk shows of be very careful about traveling through Plimpton. And that was a time when we barely could afford to have two cruises on the road. And so it really was an attitude that you don't speed in Plimpton. I live on one of those corners that I guess you folks decided was worthy of the designated as a serious traffic problem and certainly it has been. I have had at least four, if not more, accidents that involved my property alone. I wish that I'd been able to take the time to get you some documentation on that, but my wall has been hit. My trees have been hit. I've had motorcycles appear on my lawn while I was on the way to a selectmen's meeting 20 some odd years ago. So we have a serious problem. And I think really I'd like to not necessarily peel back the onion, but reflect on the fact that we've had a history in the past of you don't do these things in Plimpton. And if not, you're going to be bagged. I watched closely the Halifax Plimpton Reporter and I look at the number of, if, now maybe they don't include all incidents, but if you look at the recorded activity of the police as it relates to pulling people over, it's minuscule compared to what it was years ago. I'm really more concerned that we don't tie public safety to those things that we do as a community, i.e. the decision to, let's say, pave the bottom of Prospect Road. And, and what that's led to is an increase in traffic and in traffic speeds in front of my property and those of others. And I would stop and say first that I, I'm certainly speaking for myself, but I, I believe I can safely speak to people that I've spoken to in the neighborhood. My neighbors next door are leaving because they can't stand it anymore. But I've had, I've had issues that have, have cost me money because we don't enforce the speeding. I, as I said, I'm concerned that the one hand doesn't know seemingly what the other hand is doing. When the highway surveyor decides to pave a piece of road, the consequences are that something's going to happen on that road. And typically what happens is the speeds increase. When they paved the bottom of Prospect Road, we won, created a wonderful straightaway where they nail it at my corner and beat feet for Middleborough. And these are people who are passing through town. They could be citizens of Plimpton, but most likely they're people coming through Plimpton to get someplace else. And they're using this because Route 44 is such a colossal screw-up that they are now bypassing Route 44. They're bypassing the screw-up at 106 and they're using Center Street and they're using Winnatuxent Road and they're using Prospect and Parsonage Road to make their way someplace else. Granted, there are probably Plimpton citizens doing this, but I believe for the most part, they are people passing through our community to get somewhere else. So I, I would like to start with we need to coordinate what happens in the community. If we're going to pave roads and I see that the highway surveyor has now issued, apparently I put out a bid for bid for, for road paving. And I'm scared to death where that's going to take place. I fear that they're going to probably try to improve Winnatuxent Road, which has now become a pass-through on people on their way to Route 44, on their way to Tractor Supply or places east and south of us. So I, I'd like to start there, Mark, quite frankly, that we need some level of coordination. Christine, you recall that years ago, we wrote a grant. You were on the board. I did some of the heavy lifting to write a grant to the state to look at what we needed at that point in time. And that was a coordinator. And the idea, particularly from my perspective, having served on the Finance Committee, Planning Board, now Board of Selectmen, Waging Personnel and what have you, that we would have someone that knew what was going on and that we would coordinate those activities. So when we pave a road, we realize that that's also probably going to increase the speeds on that road. And that probably means that we need to get police out there as well as the Highway Department and the paving equipment so that we maintain some civility. A weekend at Prospect Road, I can tell you, is a nightmare. And for those of you who, I don't take offense to the backwoods people that live in the back W O O D S and on protected roads in subdivisions, don't have any idea, I think, what goes on on those main roads that pass through the community. And this straightaway that was created by paving the bottom of Prospect Road is a fine example. And Mark, I would thank you for putting the sign up between where Winnatuxent joins Parsonage because things have slowed down a bit. But we still have people flying through here at 50 miles an hour. They don't slow down for the most part for the 20 mile an hour zone, even with the new radar. So I, to me, the coordination should be between the highway surveyor and the police department, the Board of Selectmen or whomever to say, we're changing the traffic patterns in Plimpton. We need to make sure that we keep public safety in mind when we do that. So I, I have invited others to attend. I don't know that they're online. They're certainly welcome to speak. Directly across from me is a gentleman who has brittle diabetes. Plimpton ambulance is there once a month typically or more. And that's a blind driveway. You don't see it coming around the corner. When I pull out of my driveway, I can't look to the right because there's a giant tree there. I have to literally pull out almost into the right of way. And, and when I look right, I, I face somebody coming up the hill at 50 or 60 miles an hour, quite frankly, many times, and facing a 20 mile an hour zone and they don't slow down. I think I, while we need to enforce things, I think we have, as a community, we, for me, the quality of life in Plimpton is why we moved here initially. The only people I think that value that today are the Board of Selectmen. When you go to get your tax abated, let's say, because you live on a busy road and you've had five accidents that have, that have led to your insurance being increased, I can tell you, the guy with the green visor at the ATB doesn't give a damn. Okay, so I'm looking to you to maybe look into this coordination and to restore Plimpton to some measure of what it was 50 years ago when we, when we could only muster two cruises and sometimes one and often nobody at night, but had a reputation that you don't mess around with Plimpton. You go through here slowly. And I haven't done the math, but can do the math to tell you the difference between doing the speed limit or a somewhat lower speed limit between the lights at 58 and the Middleborough line going by my house. And it's, it's not minutes, it's seconds to go through here slowly.
Thank you, Howard. I really appreciate that. I want to say a little bit cognizant of time. We, we do have a public hearing at six. I, just for people that maybe aren't seeing this, there were a couple chats and Michelle Ruckston mentioned Spring Speed is another area of problems. And Keith Sexton put in the chat suggesting community edits to WAS to keep people from cutting through the use of police dummy cars and traffic enforcement grants. And I will say, in the discussions we kind of had so far, Howard, your suggestion about coordination fits pretty nicely. One of the next steps we wanted to do, the Selectmen, Town and Min, Highway Surveyor and Police Chief getting together, putting together further steps beyond the steps we've taken already. One of the problems is the police presence piece, I think, is a really important piece. And Howard, I totally resonate with maybe 10, certainly 15 or 20 years ago, it was absolutely understood that you didn't speed in Plimpton. If you did, you got a ticket. And I, I would love nothing more than if we got back to that sort of thing. I will admit, I might end up with a lot of tickets along the way or I need that to slow down along the way, but I would love for that to happen. I think we run into a problem with human resources and, and might even have to think in terms of some of the increased, increased presence, police coming or consideration toward that needing to be dealt with at budget time. So I, there may be more things we can do immediately. I think the coordination piece is a big piece. I want to make sure, is there anyone else that wanted to comment, citizens on this?
Another random, another random idea, Mark, is have our chief, who I don't see in attendance, reach out to the administrator of the Police Academy and invite them to do their radar workshops in our town instead of doing it with state police on the highway. You park 50 police recruits on the side of the road and they're practicing their radar skills with a, you know, there'll be a state police car usually with lights on. That might be a deterrent because it just will throw people off. They might not know. I'm throwing things out that are, you know, we have to use the very limited resources we have, right? And I understand in today's climate that our police saying that there's only one or two cars on the road and they don't want to get themselves tied up in a, in a traffic event. I understand that. But myself, being a prior law enforcement officer, I'm going to tell you that a lot of towns can effectively be policed with one or two people that understand the law and the application of it and keep it within the spirit of what their town is looking for.
Yeah, I, I see it as a cultural issue, quite frankly, and I agree with you, sir. When I, when two cruises can show up, when the ambulance shows up, where are they the rest of the time? I would offer the board to maybe talk to the publishers of the Halifax Plimpton Recorder and get yourself a year's worth of, of documented evidence as to what's going on in terms of, of police ticketing and the rest. And it's quite revealing. What kind of a town do we want to be? I came here for peace and quiet and limited government, quite frankly. And the peace and quiet has left. My neighbors are leaving for a quiet spot in Maine because they can't take the racetrack that has been created in front of their house by paving the road. You know, my fear is that the, that the, that the ad that the highway surveyor had in the paper was probably to pave that rough section of Winnatuxent Street that extends over to Cross Street and, and all the dangerous ponders and the rest of the there. So they can facilitate the travel of people through Plimpton to Tractor Supply or wherever they happen to be going. And, and I think this coordination is absolutely important that we, that we don't facilitate that, that we don't become pawns of mass DOT. Okay, they're giving us money. When I saw the barriers go up and on Parsonage Road, I knew we were in trouble. When you first started with a security zone, Mark, I knew we were in trouble because nowhere did I see the police involved in those discussions. Now, I may be wrong. That may be a superficial observation, but I never saw the chief of police, any more than I see the chief of police online with us now to understand what the problem. I've been passed three times on Parsonage Road. I've been passed one time on Prospect Road. Becky Lippin shared with me that last, a couple of weeks ago, she was damn near killed by somebody passing somebody else on the lower portion of, of Prospect Road. And.
It's crazy. It's crazy.
It's crazy. We're out of control and, and and I, I was afraid, Mark, the argument would always get down to, we don't have enough people. Well, I can tell you, the last person that put a radar sign in front of my house was Bob. I forget his last name. Yeah, that left four or five years ago. And Bob, at my pleading, put the sign out here. The last time I saw the sign, it was buried in a closet in the police station. Okay, so it's time to pull that stuff out. If they needed an electric line to hook it up. We saw some progress, but whatever reason, somebody put a 35 mile an hour radar sign up on my corner and then it disappeared and I haven't seen it since. And I suspect the highway surveyor didn't put it there because that sign's been locked, knocked down three or four times since I've been here. So it is a matter of, well, we can talk policy, but we know where that gets us.
Can I interrupt you for a second? I completely agree with what you're saying. I think this is a bigger issue than should be an agenda item on our very full agenda. I think that we need to have a meeting just to talk about traffic and that, I mean, I feel like we've done everything outside of enforcement to try to get people to slow down. It's not working. And that this board needs to work with, with Liz and with Rob and with Matt and to come up with some ideas and then have a meeting and bring it back and, and have some community input because this is a far-reaching issue. It's not getting better. It's getting worse. And I, I agree with what everybody has said and I think we need to explore some options. And just discussing it at this meeting really isn't going to get anything done.
Yep.
So it's hearing, it's hearing what you're saying, but I think we need some action and I don't want to shut you down, but we do have this hearing scheduled for six. And I think we need to, to just bring this forward as a standalone item for full discussion at an off night and, and that we need to prior to that, do our due diligence and see what our options are. And then get back together again and, and talk about what the plan is to address these issues.
Thank you.
Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds great to me.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted to make a very quick comment. I did want to say that the flashing lights up by Ring Road appear to be helping. Things have been better coming past my house, even though they do pick up speed coming up the hill. But I think then the visual of those flashing signs does help. So I just wanted to put my vote in that I think they're somewhat effective. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. We've tried a bunch of stuff and we'll keep trying stuff. It's good to have this input. We have more work to do. We'll keep doing it and keep an eye out on future agendas for more.
Yes. Perfect. And if you want to us to email you when we'll be talking about this again, just reach out to Bree and she'll put you on a mailing list so that everybody that is interested in this topic has the opportunity to speak with us at a, at a future meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you all so much for coming. We appreciate the input. Definitely work to do on this topic. More to come. So this hasn't fallen on deaf ears. This has been a concern of all of us and we just need to, to stop messing around with this and, and get tough. So thank you so much for sharing all of your, your comments and suggestions. All right. So now being shortly after six o'clock, 6:13, we do have a public hearing that is posted regarding an application for Cornerstone Energy Services for new transmission lines that will cross above Spring Street approximately 2,000 feet northwesterly of its intersection with Route 44 and Brook Street, 1,200 feet northeasterly of its intersection with Old Farm Road. This was advertised in the Halifax Express. Liz, did you want to take the lead on this one?
Sure. So notice was sufficiently given for the public hearing. And this essentially, in a nutshell, is as it reads on the agenda. We are required to hold a hearing anytime there's something going on with transmission lines. And this is for new overhead transmission lines. And they're going to cross above Spring Street a little bit northwesterly of the intersection with 44 and also cross Brook Street approximately 1,200 feet northeasterly of the intersection with Old Farm Road. So it does require a vote of the Board of Selectmen just for this to proceed. And it's part of their routine maintenance from some other upgrades that they were doing on the Kingston Line, part of a much larger project. Oh, Christine, I think you're muted.
Thank you, Liz. All right. So I'll open the hearing for discussion on this matter. Is there anyone from Cornerstone Energy that had anyone, anything to say on this? All right. Doesn't look like it. All right. Anyone that has something to say in favor of this project? All right. See no hands, hear no voices? How about anyone who is, would like to say something in opposition to new transmission lines being installed?
I'd like to speak, Christine. I'm still on the line.
Okay, go ahead, Howard.
Yeah. Is this an existing transmission corridor through the town of Plimpton?
It appears that there are new transmission lines. Or Spring Street. Or Spring Street and Brook Street.
Along the rights of way or through an existing right of way?
Following public ways. The hearing says following public ways.
Yeah, and what is it going to service?
I don't have that answer, Howard.
It's those whole sections of the town.
I can tell you a little more because I'm actually a legal intervenor on this case because I live on Spring Street on the right of way Egress. It is a huge multimillion dollar project in which they will be, they meaning EverSource, will actually be installing a new, gosh, I think it's like two hundred feet, an H transmission line structure right on basically a budding our property. So this is much bigger than just one piece. This is Kingston, Plimpton, Carver. It's the whole line. So it is an existing line, but basically they are adding to it, is my understanding. Many, I've read a lot of the documentation over the past year about this, and I think I'm the only neighbor that actually is the legal intervenor in this situation, just because I don't think it's been publicized enough within the town for all of the neighbors to be aware of what's happening. But I have significant concerns about how that will affect well water with digging, all kinds of impacts, which might not be specifically about the line item we have here tonight, but about the scope of the project overall.
Well, as I agree with you, Michelle, there's a lot of sleepers running around the the South Shore these days, and this could be one of them. Not the least of which is the the lithium bombs that they're planning for Carver. And I have no idea what the plans are for Plimpton, and I suspect Plimpton has no idea what the plans are for Plimpton to accommodate solar foolishness. So I see that they've covered most of the Arju bogs with solar. Is this to transmit solar energy out of the community? Can we expect to see a lithium battery in the community as a result of this? I I guess I I hate to seem so negative, but I the town of Plimpton, the town of Carver is about to have one shoved down their throat. And I'm wondering if this is just the first step towards us getting our own lithium bomb.
I think in terms of Carver, Howard, it's my understanding that Carver has put a one-year monatorium on anything to do with a battery farm.
Yeah, you're quite right, John, but the but the proponent has asked the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to subvert the Carver zoning bylaws in order to put it there.
Sure, and if they stay, if the state does that, we're kind of have our hands tied. But I think what's going on in Carver is going to give us a lot of insight into what Plimpton should be thinking about how to control this.
Well, Carver, I I actually stood out at the town meeting when Carver voted to vote the moratorium. And I can tell you that that the request is from the applicant to subvert the zoning bylaws of the town of Carver to place that in downtown Carver.
Well, the question before us right now, though, is do we give street crossings to the company that's requesting it? I'm not sure that beyond the street crossing, I don't think we have any legal standing right now.
So, but, well, but what's crossing the street? High tension lines that weren't there before, three phase that wasn't there perhaps before?
My understanding is that it's a new secondary structure, and it will be one of several, at least on our property. And also, again, I'm not an expert by any means, reading all these EverSource reports that are hundreds and hundreds of pages long. But basically, the, it seems like the bulk of the project will be underground wires. But on Spring Street specifically, which is line one sixteen that runs on our property. That will be a new overhead within, there's already an existing transformer on our property, which is a single monopole. But now they want to put a secondary H structure, which is much larger, of course, adjacent to our property, and then another one set back not on our property, but actually between us and our buddy neighbors behind us. So that will be, so basically they're connecting that because I guess there's not, they need more, more on the grid, more electricity. So that's my understanding for what I've read.
Yeah, well, I have to believe that it somehow all gets back to accommodating solar and and the consequences of a, I hate to be so negative, folks, but I've learned in my eighty years not to trust these people. And so I I really think you need more information.
Construction starting this month and will last for about a year on our property.
And they'd love you to think you have no rights, John, you know, you do.
We do, that's right.
Yeah, and so
The applicant, is there a representative of the applicant? All right, so I, but I, I, and I, I'm really sympathetic to a lot of what's been said, though. I think John Trainer is correct that the specific thing we're being asked for is this application of new transmission lines across a public way. And I, I, there are a whole bunch of other issues here that are not, aren't in our purview now. I think with the questions raised, I'd like to hear from the applicant.
I think that's a good way to go, Mark. I think we should just put it on hold, have them come in, and let's hear about their side of the story.
Yeah, I agree. Why don't we continue the hearing to a future date?
Can we set a date certain so that we don't have to pay for advertising again? Do you want to say October seventeenth? And that would give us time to circle back with the applicant and get them on a call. If you said like October seventeenth at six o'clock, then we won't need to re-advertise and absorb that cost.
That's a good date for me. Is that our, John and Mark, are you both good with the seventeenth? Okay, Liz, do you want to try it for six P M. again on the seventeenth?
Let's plan on that.
Okay, so the best course of action is to vote to continue the hearing, correct? We don't close it, so we'll continue the hearing until October seventeenth at six P M. When hopefully a representative from Cornerstone Energy Service can join us to discuss the project in detail or in greater detail, any detail, actually. Okay, all right, so I made a motion to continue the hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, so we've now continued the hearing. All right, so thank you for joining us. What's going on?
You have, there are packets in my office. If you'd like to come with maps and exhibit on them, if you'd like to come and pick them up.
Okay, perfect, so we'll pick those up prior to our meeting with EverSource, and then we'll have a better idea of the the scope of the project. But I think we still need to have a rep in that's available to answer questions as we continue with the hearing.
I did email her the agenda and the login information. Okay, great, thank you.
Perfect, thanks, Bree. Okay, so we'll continue with the hearing on October seventeenth. All right, thank you all for joining us for that one. All right, so next item on the agenda is sixteen one-day liquor license requests from Brewery Forty-four. Mike Johnson is on the the call with us today. Mike, did you want to to speak to this?
Sure, thanks, everyone. We approached the board last year regarding this. What we're looking at doing is a small beer and seltzer garden. We've done similar events in the past, most recently at the Carver Old Home Days. We also have done some recently at Kingston Gray's Beach. And we've got a couple scheduled right now for the fall. Basically, what we're looking to do is a controlled space where we're serving our pumpkin beers and our seltzers to adults. It's a space that's roped off, it's heavily controlled. We have trained servers. We also have a million dollar liquor liability policy. And this is the, basically, something that a lot of other places are doing as we move in towards, you know, the fall. So we, we were approved last year. There were some issues in regards to a police detail. So we're coming up again with asking the board for approval for for these dates.
Are your people tip certified, Michael?
Yes, everybody in the brewery is tip certified.
Thank you.
And we have to provide that documentation whenever we do an event.
Mark, do you have any questions?
Well, was there some concern about police detail or has that been sorted out?
There was concern, and I believe that the chief wants to work with forty Brewery Forty-four and has suggested a four-hour window for a detail. And that he would like Mr. Johnson to choose the four hours. They're, they'll be there from one to five, so we could do like twelve to four or one to five. But the chief wants to work with him on that with a four-hour detail to be determined by Mr. Johnson. Is that correct? Is that your?
Yep, that is correct. They had a good conversation with it. I understand that anything after four hours is a minimum of eight hour or it's it's an eight hour payment for the detail. One of the things that I would like to look at, though, is is I understand the need for a police detail in the beginning. Absolutely being cautious about it. But what I'm not sure of is why we would need a police detail every single day that we're serving. The following towns do not require police details for these type of events. Kingston, Halifax, Plymouth, Middleborough, Hingham, Hanover, Marshville, the Hall and Situate. Neither one, none of those towns require a full-time police details for these type of events. So what we're asking for is, we absolutely want to abide by the police detail. However, we're asking for a review after the second week to determine if a police detail is still necessary. And just because if, you know, that that's, a police detail basically means for the entire time that it would not be worthwhile for us to do it. If we can do something where we can try it with a police detail for a period of time and then a review and all parties agree that the police detail is not necessary, then great, we can, we can make this happen. But otherwise, it's just cost prohibitive to, you know, considering that we're only going to be, if we can only be there for four hours. We have to sell ten beers an hour, no, I'm sorry, twelve beers just to pay for the police detail per hour. Not to mention our liability insurance, our staffing and working composite workers' compensation costs, as well as the other, the cost of the product. When you add all those up, the police detail kind of knocks it over. So it's not something that would be profitable or feasible for us to do. So I guess what I'm asking the board to do is, is it possible that after we have gone a weekend, if we can ask for a review with the interested parties of the police chief and determine if it's still necessary to have a police detail for the, for the rest of the time that we're there?
So, Michael, I would, I really appreciate appreciate what you're saying, yeah. But being in a butter and living across the street, this is turned into a nightmare for us. And I could speak for everybody on Center Street. So the police detail, and as far as I'm concerned, is required one hundred percent of the time.
So let me ask you this, Russ, is that, is it, you said it's a nightmare to be in a butter. Is that because of traffic?
It's because of traffic, it's because people throwing trash out of their cars, it's because loud music, it's because of a lot of things.
Okay, well, let's also chalk it up with the people who are already showing up to the event liquored up, and they're throwing their nips and alcohol cans on our properties. And then when they're leaving, if they're even getting more liquored up, then they're peeling out and acting as a hazard or a nuisance to us. I would, I would, Mike, I I support your business. I'll come down and see you down at your main establishment. But in my backyard, no way, if you don't have a police detail or someone who can be there to monitor what is going on in live time. We don't want it over here, at least myself or my my neighbors.
Sure, I understand absolutely, Mark. I mean, it's a, it's it's an event that's gotten very large. Unfortunately, there's not a a police detail out there all the time. And that's, I'm not sure why the board doesn't require a police detail for the traffic, given, you know, what it's like. I will tell you that if you are serving alcohol, you're generally going to have less people bring their own alcohol. You know, that's just, you know, the way it it tends to be. We, there's no, really no difference between what we're doing and a restaurant that's serving alcohol. You know, we have trained servers, like I said, we have the the control premise, the full liquor liability. You know, we're, our establishment is very family friendly, believe it or not. If you come there, you'll see a lot of families, it's not a, you know, beers and shots and people don't get drunk. It's just a way for people to, you know, sample some local craft beer and and enjoy the day. So I certainly understand what you're coming from. I think the 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 concern too is if if we're paying for a police detail, that police detail is going to be concerned with what, with our beer garden, not for the entire premises. That's something that would be on Saw Chocks in regards to the parking lot and the the parking and the the parking or the the traffic situation.
Yeah, Mike, absolutely. If you were paying for police detail, he should be right there within your rope section to make sure that none of your drinks transfer out of your direct control. And then I'll put it to the town, the board. When was the last time we had the A B C C come in or do any police purchase stings within our town? I I don't know of any reasonable or local you know, controlled purchases or or activities with the A B C C within this town. And I would suggest that if Mr. Johnson was going to go forward with this, that he would be subjected to such audit.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. And we, we have been serving beer for a year and a half in seltzers in Carver. We're subject to audits from the A B C C. They have come to the area. We have never been cited for anything, and if the A B C wants to come and and audit us while we're we're serving beers and seltzers, we one hundred percent support that.
You, go ahead, John.
Keith, I, when you say, are you talking about liquor stores or all alcohol? How are you?
And again, and again, in my prior professional experience, I used to bring in and make controlled purchases of liquor within a coordination with the A B C C, we would go after all restaurants, bars, liquor shops, anyone who held a license.
We only have a couple. I do wine tastings on the weekend for another store in Kingston. And so, you know, you have to be tip certified, but we're very aware of making sure that people don't leave the store. One, it's a customer issue. You don't want your customer being a problem. But I do agree, we, the police details are good because just the presence of the police, even if they're not exactly right on the road, that's to calm things down. So I'm very much in favor of the police detail. I'm not opposed to a review, but quite frankly, I think the police details needed.
He does check into our establishments. They were here like late springtime, early summer, just recently. So they are checking periodically. They typically don't announce to us when they're going to be coming for obvious reasons.
Sure, that I'm talking.
Have been auditing our establishments.
I'm talking like police-based events.
That's something we could definitely work with our police chief on and get some more of that, more on the local level. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, we used to do it all the time. We, we would get a couple you know, college-age interns or whatnot, and we would slot them some money in a fake I D and or whatever we had to do, and we would send them out. And we shut down many licenses across the city in which I worked every summer, every year.
Michael, you listed several towns that don't require a police detail for the kind of thing you do. Are there towns on the South Shore that do require you to have a police detail?
I know that Situate did require a police detail, and then they did a review and the detail is no longer required. Hingham was the same way. I work with Untold Brewery up there, and they've got a beer garden. They initially had a police detail that that was reviewed and it was found that it was no longer necessary. I mean, I think I I totally agree with the frustration of being in a butter and dealing with things that are not in our control, nip bottles, volume, that's out of our control. We're not contributing to that at all. What we're just trying to do is provide a source that, you know, for for a source that, you know, for beverages for adults. You know, we see these pop up gardens everywhere now. You know, Derby Street has them. They they're on down and hall all summer long. It's a good environment for people to come in. They bring their dogs. They bring, you know, they have the kids there. They have a beer or two and then they, you know, they head out. That, you know, the the issues that you're dealing with, they were there before we're there. And, you know, they'll be there unfortunately after we're gone. But to to say that serving legalized beverages is going to contribute to the situation, I'm not really seeing the connection there. You know, if people want to, you know, drink, drink, drink a bunch of of nips in the parking lot and there's no detail, that's not on us. I mean, I would go back and say maybe Sawchucks needs to have a detail and not sure why the board hasn't requested it or required it. But, you know, for us to be there, I mean, I certainly tell you that the area that we're in, you know, we're very cautious. If we if we see people with nip bottles outside of our area, you know, that's something that we would be aware of and and make those, you know, reporting if we had to. But, you know, again, we're just responsible for our particular area within the whole premises.
Michael, I agree with you. Maybe it's a bigger problem and issue with what's going on next law, not not necessarily you.
Mark, did you have anything you wanted to add on this?
No, not, no.
Okay.
Well, I have an observation. We have an amusement park tied to an agricultural activity and where do you draw the line? Agriculture is protected use, but at some point it would seem to cross the line, so.
Howard, I think you're right. The line was crossed a long time ago.
Long time ago, yeah. So people being people, you can expect problems when you have the size of crowds that we're now attracting to agritourism.
Yeah, Howard, I would agree with you. I would just, that's a conversation for another day to see if we couldn't make Mr. Sawchuck move his main entrance out to fifty-eight and get it out of this, which is potentially agricultural residential area.
Yes.
There's been at least thirty, twenty to thirty structures added to this road since I've lived here within the last 10 years. And like I said, in the beginning, when we come down to car crashes and the seriousness of this, this town has got a problem going on over here on this west side.
Yeah.
Better figure it out.
Yep. So it's, as I say, to me, it's an amusement park attached to a farm.
All right, so what we have before us is a vote to on sixteen one day liquor license request from Brewery forty-four. And this is Mike Johnson for Sawchuck Farm for beer and beer and seltzer garden. And the question is whether or not we want to grant the license. And in conjunction with granting the license, if we are requiring a police detail for four hours.
Well,
I wonder if we might, if if we might grant the license for the four hours for the first two weekends and then revisit this.
So you don't want to grant sixteen, you want to grant two one day liquor? No, that would be four, right? Because it's two days. So you want to grant four one day liquor licenses with requiring the four hour detail and that after maybe three of those, or actually the four, that we would put this on our agenda and with feedback from the chief and ask Mike to come in and meet with us again and determine is that to determine whether or not you want to continue with the license or whether you want to continue with the detail?
Do you want them to have to come back to another meeting or would you rather vote the sixteen now? Noting that they are required to have a police detail for the first two weekends. And then upon recommendation from the police chief, they could be free to consider dropping the detail. And then it's up to them if they want to continue, but I don't know if it makes a lot of sense to have them come back again to another meeting.
Okay.
If it's going to be the police chief's recommendation.
Yeah, that's good. I'm good with that.
Okay, John.
I would rather, yes, I would like to see us approve the sixteen. I I think Michael Johnson has to make a decision, a business decision of whether it's worth his while. But I think we need a police detail there. I'm very happy to do a review in two weeks if that's what it takes, a three or four. But I would like to proceed as if we were doing the sixteen with police detail. We can always change it later.
Okay, good suggestion, Liz. And it sounds like we're both on, all three of us are on board with that. So I'll make a motion that we grant Brewery forty-four and Michael Johnson sixteen one day liquor licenses for his beer and seltzer garden at Sawchuck Farm with the stipulation that a four day or four hour police detail is required. And and that after two weeks that we will review that with the chief.
Second.
Okay, so we got a second roll call vote. Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, so we'll we'll sign what we need to do for the sixteen one day liquor licenses and then we'll meet with the chief after two weekends to determine whether or not the detail is required for the for the entire sixteen days or sixteen events.
Good.
Okay.
Awesome, great.
Okay, Michael, thank you. All right, so next item on the agenda is the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. Mark, did you want to take the lead on this one?
Sure, thank you. Good news, I think. Governor Baker last week announced the awarding of a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant for Plumpton toward the purchase of Turkey Swamp, almost 300 acres just north of Maple Street, running from very close to fifty-eight all the way across to Main Street. This is one of the largest of the MVP grants that was given. There were seventy-three that were granted altogether, $500,000 toward that purchase. While we're awaiting approval of that grant, we did go to the Sheehan Family Charitable Giving Committee and asked for a grant from them. And we were successful on that. At the same time, a community preservation committee was going through its process on an open space application to take care of the balance. I do want to mention along the way that Howard Randall was instrumental in gaining us entree to the Sheehan Family Giving Committee so that we could plead our case before them and we appreciate his help on that. Bottom line on this, if things go well, we have several more steps. If we, if things go well, net cost of the town under $100,000 to buy 300 acres for preservation, water protection, habitat protection, and another big piece in a greenway beginning to stretch across town, protecting habitat, dealing with drought resilience and flood control. So we're pretty excited about the whole thing. There's title work to be done. There's a purchase and sale to be drafted, actually has been drafted. And hopefully we'll be able to bring that draft to the to the Board of Selectment for an executive session review in a couple of weeks. I might just celebrate a little and just remind everyone the degree to which we are a very small town of very modest means and to be successful in these kinds of projects, we have to be kind of creative, particularly with these multiple funding sources. But I'm just ecstatic that we're able to pull this off with the state's state support. Very, very appreciative of the Sheehan family and and very appreciative of the CPA money available. Roughly a third of the CPA money is estate match money. So it shows really how little citizen tax dollars are being needed to to pull this thing off.
Well, it's a, yeah, it's a win-win-win. I would like to also thank Linda Letty, I mean, for all that she's done with this, but it's a great, it's a great asset to the town. I think the town should be very pleased with what's going on here. Thank you, Mark.
The the MVP process was a big, long thing. It took three years. Open Space Committee spent a huge amount of time on it. Linda Letty spent a good part of her life on this and we're appreciative for her health and her energy and the beautiful results that are coming from it. And so so that it gets into the record, I just want to say, hooray.
That's wonderful. Oh, my goodness, so exciting. All right, and a lot of hard work over a lot, very long period of time. It was a lot of foresight and you guys really did an amazing job pulling this together.
And more to go. And the other piece I should mention is we're going to need a special town meeting to deal with some of these issues and approve the spending of CPA dollars. I think maybe that's the next agenda right now. And I, it'll take a while to get all this done, but we're working hard to get it done.
All right, Mark, that's a great segue into the next item. So Liz, did you want to take the lead on the scheduling of a fall special town meeting and opening of the warrant?
Sure. So as far as what Mark mentioned, the next step would be scheduling a fall special town meeting. After checking in with multiple entities, it looks like the date of Wednesday, November thirtieth seems to be the best option for us. So if you could please vote to schedule a meeting on that date. And then I would also recommend opening the warrant this evening.
Liz, when will the warrant close? Do we need to set a date for the warrant to close as well?
It, so there's no set date for a special town meeting warrant to close. It does have to be posted a minimum of two weeks prior to the meeting date. So I don't know if you want to set a date tonight for it to close. I mean, maybe giving people, I don't know, three weeks maybe to put in articles, I think, would be reasonable. So maybe you could vote tonight that it will close automatically at the end of the day on October third.
Ten three end of day, okay.
Maybe time, I would say eight PM because that's that's been used in the past. So I would say by eight PM on October third, articles need to be submitted. And then I'll get something out tomorrow that lets everyone know that the warrant is open.
John Wilhamsen, you had a comment?
So we haven't, we have that water issue with the old townhouse and that water was on the floor and no one spilled it there. So it clearly came in from above. And we're having that assessment done of the building. And I'm not quite sure what the timing is going to be of that. But since we actually have water infiltration, it may be something we need to move with sooner rather than later. So I just, I just
We can put a placeholder.
Why don't we do that? I mean, we will, we'll have to decide where we actually want to use the funds. But I think we probably at least need a placeholder if we're going to do October third and that would be fine.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, I'll make a motion that we schedule a special town meeting for November thirtieth. And that would be at what, six PM?
I think seven PM.
Seven PM. Do we need to say where it will be held at this point or can we just schedule it?
You can just schedule it, but it would be at Denne Elementary School.
Okay. All right, so November thirtieth.
Wouldn't hold that many people and it's all set up for election purposes, so.
Okay, perfect. All right, so seven o'clock PM on November thirtieth at the Denne Elementary School. And we will be opening the warrant tonight. And the warrant will close on October third at eight PM. So all warrant articles need just be submitted to the town administrator in the appropriate format by October third at eight PM.
And Liz, you let Area fifty-eight know?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a second to schedule the town meeting for November thirtieth?
Second.
All right, second roll call vote. Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, all right, so we've scheduled the special town meeting. All right, so John, next item is yours, consideration of title change to select board.
Yeah, we talked about this in the past and this is near and dear to my heart. I think in the past it was decided that we had too much on our plate. But I would like to see us go forward. I think of the towns that have select boards or Board of Selectmen, we're getting well over now. We're getting very close to 50% have changed their title. Plymouth has done it, CAV has done it. And I think it's long overdue and I circulated something that Greg Corbo had put together in a how, in terms of how this would be done with some articles and with this town meeting coming up, I think it would be well received. So I'd like to make a motion that we go forward with a with a change from Board of Selectmen to Select Board incorporating the verbiage that Mr. Corbo, our lawyer, has put together.
John, I appreciate you making the change. For myself, I'm really not interested in changing to Select Board. I I like the title. I just, I feel like we're changing just to change and I don't know, I just don't feel like it's really necessary for us to do this. And to me, it just seems like it's kind of a, you know, just our desire to keep up with everybody else. And I don't really care what everybody else does. I'm more of, I like our old seal. I like the Board of Selectmen. I like our history and and I just, it's a gender neutral title. And for me, I'm not offended by being called a selectman and there might be other people that, you know, would prefer Select Board, but I'm not one of them. I like the the I think it's a mouthful. I like the way it is just Board of Selectmen. But that's, that's just me.
Mark?
I am, I'm also quite content with the present name. I I I feel like it links to history in a town like Plumpton. It links back almost 300 years and I appreciate that. I I I'm much less, if if we're concerned about gen- gender equality or equity, I'm much more concerned about action and titles. And I think the town of Plumpton, as witnessed by so many women in leadership roles, already does that very well. I also think sometimes these old time names and history really are a teaching tool. And I I I I believe we can be selectmen and be a Board of Selectmen and still fully recognize our aim, desire and intent to encourage gender equality. So I I would be against the change.
Okay, at least I know where you're coming from. I do intend to pursue this and there's other routes and I'll take those. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, so next item on the agenda is old school house, Center Street discussion, possible next step. So Mark, are you taking the lead on this one?
I can fairly briefly. Robert Littman from Center Street contacted me a few weeks ago in my role as Chair of Community Preservation Committee. He has an old schoolhouse on his property, built in eighteen thirteen, a one room schoolhouse. He is interested in potentially selling it and having it move. And he wondered if Community Preservation Committee, this might be a project for the for CPC. Along the way, Rick Burnett, Justin Shepard and I went out, took a look at the building. We're all members of CPC. It's an interesting building. It's old, it's rough. The thing could be moved. We talked about moving it in one piece. As I understand it, that's five figures and fifty five figures and 50, 60, $70,000 to do. We talked about the possibility of cutting the thing in half. It's post and beam construction. We talked about the possibility of taking the thing apart and building it somewhere else. The, the, the problem for the moment with the town or with this is a CPA project. It really would require a champion and it require a site to move the thing, neither of which we have right now. I did contact the Historical Commission, letting them know about the possible availability. I have also contacted Four Circle Homes, Jen McDonald and Mike Lemieux, if they have interested, they you know, certainly had experience with preserving. So it's really just to let my fellow selectmen know it's out there. It would take a champion or a site if the town was doing it, maybe it could be done privately.
So no action at this time, right, Mark?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you for sharing that.
Can I go ahead, Howard? Yeah. Mark, can you contact me? There may be an angel out there that I know of.
Oh, we look, we like angels. Yeah, want to talk to angels.
Aio sex maxima, you know, the the old theater trick.
Okay, I'll be in touch.
Thank you, Howard. All right. So next item on the agenda is approval of the, I'm sorry, I skipped nomination. Nomination of a BOS member for Regional School District Collective Bargaining. And I believe that they're asking for a rep from each town. Historically, I've been the lucky rep. And and I represented all three towns, but it sounds like we're moving to a different format, which may or may not come to fruition, but they were asking at one point for us to nominate a member to represent the town in their collective bargaining with the union.
It'll be in the paper.
So John or Mark, are you interested in this?
Look, you've had experience and I'm absolutely glad to have you continue if you have interest. I, I don't have that much direct interest, but if you're feeling a need for burden to be lifted, I could be a sacrificial lamb if need be.
John, do you have any interest in serving on this committee?
I don't.
Okay, I don't either, but.
Oh, damn.
Oh, this is probably one of my least favorite committees to serve on, but I will, I'll, I'll stick with it. I've been here. So I do have some historical perspective and where we've been and and I'll continue to toe the line for the, the town of Plumton.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome. All right. So I'll make a motion that I represent the Plumton Board of Selectmen in regards to collective bargaining at the Regional School District.
Second.
Second, all right, second roll call vote, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. So next item is approval of TPC voted contracts regarding the fire station project. Liz, did you want to take the lead on this one?
Sure. So we received the revised contract. This is with context architectural. They provided the services on the first phase of the project, which was the police station. And this would be to extend those services. And from what I sent out to you and John, I'm sure will want to speak to this, but it appears that TPC has voted to approve through task number five. So it would be getting your vote of approval on that through task number five.
Any questions or comments? John or?
Just simply, this is, this is just our ability to engage them and to get things moving, particularly with, you know, we have some other work that's going to need to be done and other contracts that will need to be approved or amended for a lot of the geotech and hydrology, hydrology work, i.e. wells. So we've got a lot coming, but this is really to get this part of it going so that they can meet with the fire chief and get design requirements and be able to start doing conceptual design. And make sure that that's not waiting for sort of the other more scientific work that needs to be done with the site in order to figure out how everything goes together.
We did review this at the last Town Properties Committee meeting and we're in agreement that this is the thing to next step.
One other thing that's more of a procedural type thing, if you do vote tonight to approve through task number five in the proposal, if you could also include as part of that vote authorizing TPC to be the signatory on anything that comes from those particular tasks that you're authorizing. That way, for every single decision that needs to be made pertaining to those individual tasks, that they don't need to keep coming back to the Board of Selectmen.
So they'd be signatories on one through five?
Correct.
All right. Any concerns, John or Mark, about signing this contract? Or approving the the TPC voted contracts? All right. So I'll make a motion that we approve the TPC contracts through task five and authorize them to be the signatory for items through task five.
I think you have to say Town Properties Committee.
I'm sorry, Town Properties Committee. Thank you. So all right. So approval of the Town Property Committee voted contracts through task five and authorizing the Town Properties Committee to be the signatory for the tasks through or through task five. So we had a second already and roll call vote, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay.
And Liz, did we have, did you, did we send around P3's thing too, or did that, or no?
Dan didn't send me anything new for that. I had thought that he was all set to just continue.
Well, he has an, he has an amendment as well because.
Okay, he didn't forward that to me, but if we want to discuss it tonight, the agenda item was inclusive of multiple.
So we have a, we have also to approve basically hiring P3 to continue their work as our project manager, which they've already been doing for us as they've been moving everything along here and getting contacts back on board. So it's, we, we looked at over at Town Properties and we're, we're fine with, with the proposal as well.
So if you could maybe give them authorization to move forward with Dan Pallotta, P3, their continued services as it relates to this next phase, that would be helpful.
Okay, so we're voting to approve the Town Properties Committee voted contract with P3 with Dan Pallotta serving as the project manager?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I'll make that as a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. So we've got P3 in there too. Anything else? Any action, other action we need to take on this?
We'll do it for this time.
Awesome. Thank you, John. Okay, next item on the agenda, and thank you for being so patient, Jessica, is the appointment of Jessica and how do you say your last name? Is it Lau? Lau, okay. I'll make a motion to appoint Jessica Lau and Jonathan Mulcahy as library trustees until the election next May, May 20th, 2023.
Second.
Second, okay. So second for these appointments, roll call vote, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes, a big thumbs up, yes.
Yes. Mrs. Joy, yes. Thank you so much, Jessica. I don't think Jonathan, is he on the call with us?
Yes, he is.
Oh, thank you so much for serving on this very important committee and we appreciate Mike recommending you and keeping things moving in such a nice direction at the library.
Yeah, thank you, trustees. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes. As a former library director's husband, thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for waiting through the whole meeting with us. This has been kind of a long one for us. So thank you very much. So you'll have to see the town clerk about getting sworn in. All right. So the next item on our agenda is warrants paid. Bree, do you have a report on the warrants that were paid?
Hi, good evening.
Excellent. Thank you. And what was the bulk of that, Bree?
Weeks of warrants.
Okay, so it was the usual. Okay, just several weeks of warrants. All right.
KP is here to spend that one this month.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Bree, very much. I appreciate that. All right. So the warrants paid were $10,975.79. Liz, do you have any updates for us?
Sure. So I've been working with a representative from the Collins Center on potentially one or two community compact grants. So more to come on that, but I'm hopeful that our application is successful. Right now I'm focusing on updates to our capital improvement plan and possibly looking at having them help us out with revamping our financial forecasting tool. And I just figured that those would be worthwhile projects, especially given that the last time they assisted the town, it was prior to my time with the town. And so now you have me. We have a new town accountant, new treasurer, new assistant assessor, as well as a new finance committee chairperson. So it seemed like timing wise, it would make a lot of sense. So more to come on that, but I'm hopeful that that's a successful application. We're also in the process of getting our MVP grant kickoff meeting scheduled. We're going to coordinate something that works with Linda Letty's availability and Brian Vesa, our conservation agent. He's taking a lead role with this project and we'll have that kickoff meeting scheduled probably within the next two weeks. We're still in the process of reviewing the draft financial policies that the town accountant has proposed. And I can get that over to all of you, just so you can take a look at it as well, but it's still very much in draft format. Once we have something a little more concrete, then we can have her come in and come to the board and get that approved. And Colleen Thompson has been working very hard on our behalf as far as DTRA is concerned. They've been through some turnover within their organization, but we're, what we're hoping to do, they've been really good to work with so far. And we'd like to see something in the more immediate future, perhaps a dial-a-ride feature while we work out some of the nuts and bolts as far as whether or not they're going to utilize our COA van and that sort of thing. So Colleen is working that front to see if she can get us a more immediate level of service from them. And then otherwise, there have been mentions of a few different potential special town meeting articles. So I'm sure that we're going to start seeing things come in once we notify everybody that the warrant is now open. So there should be more to come on that, but as of right now, I'm aware of maybe five or six different items that people are going to want addressed at that special town meeting. And then there is nothing in correspondence.
Thank you, Liz. All right. So next item on the agenda is the minutes from August 29th. John and Mark, did you both get a chance to read the minutes?
I did and I was fine with them.
I'm fine.
Okay, perfect. All right. So I wasn't in attendance. So do one of you want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a mo-
Go ahead, Mark. Well, actually, since I was
You were the chair.
Yeah, so Mark, you should probably make it.
Okay, make a motion, we accept the minutes of August 29th as written.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy will abstain. So Bree, I'm going to abstain on that since I wasn't in attendance. Okay, we're to that, let's see, the end of the agenda. So our next meeting will be 9:26. Looks like we've got a meeting also October 17th and then we'll have a police event, pinning event, more to come on that on October 3rd at 5:30 PM. So now we're onto selectmen's raves. John or Mark, did you want to go first?
So I, I have a couple, actually. I, I'm thrilled about the community compact grant application. I think I initiated one of those about five or six years ago and the forecasting tool was beautiful. I we didn't really have the personnel to use it at the time, but it looked like it had a lot of potential. And I think with the really talented people we have now, that could be really powerful for us. So I'm excited about that. I'm excited about the community compact people, the really talented people they offer us. The other one, though, I want to fuse about even more is the flower show a couple of weeks ago. Was just amazing. Beautiful flowers, wonderful music, nice attendance, pretty day. It was totally a Plumtonian type of thing and was the kind of thing to be proud of and be proud of our time. So very appreciative for everyone that worked on that.
John, did you want to go?
Yeah, I have a couple. I, I, I'm excited about the Collins tool too. We have not used that the way that we sort of implied that we would to the state. So this is a big opportunity. I think it'll bring a consistent way of looking across the town at how financially we're doing and that's so much well needed. I also have a rave. There are responder therapy dogs across the United States. There's six, 60 teams. Captain Cheryl Davis and her dog Wilden have just become the sixth canine human team in Massachusetts. These first responder theories, and I'll just read you from the website. They lead the way in addressing behavioral health needs by providing emotional support to first responders with the use of therapy dogs. We provide this service in the field with a hands-on approach. Research shows that therapy dog services positively impact this population's mental health issues. And they go through a number of things like reducing stress and anxiety, increasing productivity. But this is, this is a continuation of the fine work that the police are doing and I'll circulate the the write-up I got off the first responders website.
I'd love to see that.
Lastly, we were told today that the, we got certified for the the monies for free cash at $800,000 and some odd dollars, $2, 802. This is a great step forward for us because last year we had a little over 283. And from my perspective, financially, I always wondered where the tax money that we were bringing in because of the high valuations was going to show up. And I assumed it was in free cash and it has. So this bodes well for our, for our meeting in next May. So very pleased.
I've got a couple of raves too. My first would be for Linda Letty, the CPC and Open Space and Conservation for all the hard work you guys did there to secure this MVP grant for Turkey Swamp. Well done. Linda, I'm sure put in tireless hours as she does with any of these projects and she really is the driving force that that keeps us all going. So thank you, Linda, for your energy and your everything that you bring to the town to help protect us and and keep us, keep our rural character, which doesn't come easy. We have to, to work to, to maintain it. And then my second one would be for everyone who showed up to talk about traffic speeding enforcement. We definitely have our work cut out for us. Thank you for, for taking the time to share your concerns. I mean, these are very real concerns. This has been something that's, that's been brewing for a long time. I think we've tried to put Band-Aids on it. And, and it's, we've come to the point where we need some hard next steps. So thank you for, for joining us. More to come on that and looking forward, it's definitely an area of opportunity for us and I think that, that we can do it. We're gonna, we're gonna step up and, and get a good plan together. We're going to, we're going to step up and, and get a good plan together and, and start to address these speeding issues, speeding enforcement issues in town. So, thank you. John, did you want to say something else? You look like you have something you wanted to say. Just to sigh?
Have a good night.
I love it. Have a good night. Thank you, everyone, for joining us and sticking with us. Very long meeting. So have a good evening. Good night.